This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August 10th. Please stand for your invocation led by Pastor Sandy McQueen, Truvan Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's up top, Ms. Madam Clerk.
Shall we pray? Return to God our heavenly Father, we come this day before your presence, acknowledging you as Lord of our lives. We ask now that you forgive our debts and trespasses against our fellow neighbors. Forgive the sins of our city, our state, and country. Your presence is welcome once again amid this city council. Thank you for the servant leaders of our city, their talent and their wisdom that they bring to the city. Continue to bless their families and their homes, occupations. Mayor Sandy Stimson, Councilman Reverend Levon Manzi, Councilman John Williams, Councilman Frederick Richardson, Councilman CJ Small, Councilman Joel Davis, Councilwoman Beth Rich, Councilwoman Gina Gregory, and our city clerk, Lisa Lambert. Thank you, God, for all the citizens, again, of Mobile. Every senior adult, every child and young adult, every first responder and healthcare worker. I ask now for your presence and protection for our city. Help us and have mercy upon us. I pray this prayer. In the name of God the Father, in the name of God the Son, and in the name of God the Holy Spirit, shall we all say together, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory. Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Morning.
We first would ask that you turn off or silence all of your electronic devices before or upon entering the council meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state clearly for the record his or her name and address. Any person desiring to address the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by no later than 2:00 p.m. The subject of your commentary must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who hadn't given that proper notice will not be allowed to address a non-agenda item before the council. Speakers are granted three minutes in order to make their presentation. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. That end also means that you have one minute remaining for summarizing. At the signing of the second bell, all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual. All statements are to be made to the chair, which is myself, and then I will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Those are the rules for this particular meeting, and we are appreciative of your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of July 27th and August 3rd.
Some move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody here this morning. Last Friday, Councilman Richardson and I had an opportunity to present Olympic silver medalist Paige Madden with a proclamation from the city council and the mayor. For those of you that may not know it, Paige was a silver medalist in the 4x200 freestyle relay team. And while that race only took just a few moments to swim, it took years of hard work. But it was a real honor to be in the presence of Paige, her parents, her coaches, and all those that have been instrumental in her life to get it to the point where she was an Olympic medalist. Just kind of a side story to that is, is that when she was coming home, which was before the games were over, the story was she was running through the airport and didn't realize it, but a box dropped out of her backpack. Somebody that was running behind her picked it up, and just as Paige was getting ready to get into the airplane, they gave it to her, and it was the silver medal that had fallen out of her backpack. Can you imagine what it would be like if you had gotten on the plane and realized that you no longer had your silver medal? Anyway, very, very fortunate. Paige is not only an Olympic swimmer, she's a brilliant young lady, attended, recently graduated from the University of Virginia, and certainly a great reflection on the city of Mobile. For those of you who may be walking through Bimble Square in the next couple of weeks, you may notice that the fountain will have been removed, or is getting ready to be removed, or it's gone. Now, the reason is, is that it's temporarily being moved to be repaired. After years and years of service, there are a lot of plumbing problems with it, there's rust and corrosion, and so it will be taken out, sent out of town to a company that specializes in the rehabilitation of fountains, and once completed, it'll be put back into a new pool area and on a new foundation. Again, after years of being where it is because of the rust and the corrosion, the ground in that area is settling, and it's created problems with the pool holding water. So, we're very fortunate to be able to intercede at this point in time before more damage is done. And this is a public-private partnership, and the driving force behind this is the Parks Conservancy, which is a citizens group that has kind of embraced Bimble Square as well as Cathedral Square and some of the things that we need to do to make sure that they stay in great condition. But the public-private partnership is that the city will be contributing $350,000. It's been also, not necessarily matched, but joined with a donation from Regions Bank of $50,000, a $100,000 grant from the Bedso Foundation, and a $100,000 grant from the Hargrove Foundation. Not only will the fountain be rebuilt, also the central part of Bimble Square will be, kind of the courtyard area, will also be rebuilt. All this has been in plans for, you know, two years when there was a lot of public input, a lot of conversation between the downtown alliance, the business owners, and interested citizens in what we should do with Bimble Square. Actually, all of that work was done before Hurricane Sally, and then after Sally came along, really destroyed a lot of the trees that were there, and that was the, really the, and I guess the, the trigger that caused us to go ahead and start this process and start raising money on the outside. Anyway, very excited to know that that's happening and excited that when it will get back and Bimble Square will be returned to its former glory. For those who recycle, you know, you still, I know that you're still having a difficult time because we can no longer accept recycling materials at the Museum Drive location or the Pine Hill Drive. Meantime, you can go out to hit road, take your recyclables, you know, and all of this is caused by the location where we take all of our recyclable products over in Pensacola area. There was a fire in that facility, it has been shut down indefinitely. I say indefinitely, it's been shut down for repairs, but once it comes back up, then we will be sure to alert the public so that you can drop your recyclable material off at those, at our two locations. I see Dr. Ischold in the crowd this morning, and I'm sure that he is going to explain to us what the latest COVID numbers are. I really won't weigh in on it, but I know from conversations that we've all been having and things we see in the media, that it is definitely on the rise. But we also know this, that vaccinations are making an impact, a positive impact, and slowing the spread of it. So, we have, last week, we were able to have a walk-in vaccination clinic in the multipurpose room on the ground floor. We had a number of city employees, county employees, and their families come in. You know, we will continue to offer the vaccinations. Of course, today, they're being offered really all over the county in different locations, from some of our pharmacies to doctors' offices, you know, to the civic center. So, we just encourage you to please get vaccinated. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we have a proclamation from Council Vice President Small to the Health Department, and we're going to ask, as they make their way to the podium, if Dr. Ischold would be prepared so that we might hear from him any commentary he would want to share with us relative to the coronavirus. Good morning.
We do have a proclamation here from the council, and it says, whereas the National Health Center Week is an annual celebration of America's health center to raise awareness of their mission and accomplishment, and whereas staying true to its motto, "The Chemistry for Strong Communities." The goal of the National Health Center Week is twofolds, to enhance the visibility and profile of community migrant, homeless, and public housing health centers, and to generate community pride and build support for health centers program. And whereas health centers have a long record of providing high-quality, cost-effective, and support-preventive and primary care services to almost 30 million people across the nation and have continued to do so while facing a global pandemic. And whereas, from the very beginning of the pandemic, community health centers found innovative ways to provide care to their patients and collectively represent the backbone of the nation's primary care system. And whereas this proclamation commemorates the observance of the 42nd anniversary of Mobile County Health Department Community Health Center, known as the Family Health that was founded in 1979. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim August the 8th through the 14th, 2021, as National Health Center Week in Mobile, and urge all our citizens to join with us in this momentous occasion, done at the City of Mobile, Mobile, Alabama, this ninth day of August 2021, and signed by all council members.
Bert Ischold, it's a great honor. Kelly Warren is our CEO of our family-oriented primary health care, our family health. We're the only health department in the state of Alabama that has an FQHC co-located at the Health Department Clinic. We're the only health department in the state of Alabama that's joint-commissioned accreditation certified for ambulatory care. So, the team really appreciates the recognition and our ability to provide health care to the underserved population. So, thank you on behalf of everybody we serve and our team, really have been working very hard providing primary health care and, again, continuing to provide vaccinations. I'd also like to thank everybody in the community for getting vaccinated, wearing masks, and taking COVID very seriously. COVID is continuing to be on an increased community transmission rate, which is very high. We're down, at the beginning of the summer, we had about 3% to 5% of the people being tested were positive. Now, we're at about 30% of the tests being positive. Our hospitals have exceeded all-time highs. We were at 276 the last time wave that we had, and this time, we're over 400 persons in the hospital. It's a critical time in health care, so please, everybody, take it seriously, please get vaccinated, and please encourage all people to be cautious, don't have large gatherings, wear masks when you're in the presence of individuals who you do not know their vaccine status. And this, too, will pass with time. It's, unfortunately, you know, it lasted, in 1918, it was almost 24 months worth of pandemic, but we will, we as a community will survive, we will recover. And, again, I just want to thank everybody for their real hard work and the inconvenience that COVID has caused, from businesses to individuals, to people who are going to get married, wedding receptions, all of those things. Even preachers at churches have been inconvenienced with COVID. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you, the council may have.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
Dr. Ischold, I can't hear you real well. I don't know if it's a problem with the microphone, or you're not close enough to it, but if you could get a little bit closer to it, that might help. We still have a great deal of vaccine hesitancy in the community, and I wonder what you could say to the people who have not been vaccinated with respect to the vaccines being both safe and effective.
Well, I think it's really clear that 97% of the people, over 400 who are in the hospital right now, are non-vaccinated. This is a preventable illness and disease. Out of those 400 in the hospital, unfortunately, a number of them are going to die. And it's really sad that they have made a personal decision not to get vaccinated and that the, the end result for some will be a loss of life. And anytime we have premature loss of life, it's terrible on the individual basis, and it's extremely hard for the community and the families. So, if anybody has any question, is that we know, right now, you'll, you'll see on our reports how many people lose their lives, but out of the 400, it would be estimated that probably 20 of those are going to die, you know, from the direct impact of COVID. And I do not know of a single human being that has died as a result of being vaccinated. So, day-to-day, you will see four, five, six people listed in our reports as a loss of life due to COVID, but I've not seen on the front page of the New York Times any day-to-day counts of death as a result of being vaccinated.
Thank you.
So, the results, I would again say, is that part of people is that this vaccine technology's been around for three or four years. It started with the Ebola outbreak. It's being produced by major pharmaceutical companies who have a tremendous experience in delivering products. And the last is that the FDA is probably going to fully certify the vaccine within the next four to six weeks. So, don't wait four to six weeks just for the paperwork because you may end up in the hospital.
Dr. Ischold, would it be fair to say that you are much more likely to die from not taking the vaccine than you are to die from taking the vaccine?
That's absolutely correct. The death rate is probably thousands of times higher, maybe tens of thousands of times, maybe hundreds of thousands of times higher that you will die from the disease and not from the vaccine.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Dr. Ischold, in talking to a lot of the, especially younger members of our society, they believe it's, believe it's two things that's causing them not to take the vaccine. One, they believe it is the mark of the beast. And number two, they believe that the vaccine has in it some sort of meaning to a chip, whereby they can be controlled by some, some group or someone unbeknownst to them, that they can control them in doing things that they normally would not do. So, can you say something about that?
Yes, there is a tremendous amount of misinformation in the community, and I would tell everybody who has a question, ask their personal physician whether they should take the vaccine or not. If you trust the doctor who's going to stand by your bed when you're having a heart attack or when you get your knee replaced or have open-heart surgery, that's the person you should trust to give you good information. So, the amount of misinformation that's available through social media is tremendous, and, again, go back to your original doctor. I have no knowledge or information of any implantable devices, and it does not change and alter your DNA. In fact, a real sad story, just so people know, is that women should go ahead and get vaccinated even if you're thinking about having children. In Birmingham, we had a mother who was COVID-positive, delivered her baby. She died of COVID, and the baby went home with her parents. Really sad case that could have been prevented had the mother gotten vaccinated during the time of her pregnancy, and now we have a young baby that doesn't have a mother. So, serious, serious consequences on personal decisions, and it's impacting all of us. So, please, everybody, give it, get, get the best source of information you can from your private doctor and get vaccinated because we can control this, in spite of what people say. Vaccines work. We used to have smallpox, and some people in this room have a little dot on their left arm where they got a smallpox vaccine. Your children may come up and say, mommy or daddy, why do you have that dot on your arm? And they'll say, it's smallpox vaccine. Why don't I have one? Because it worked. Vaccines work. Thank you.
I have a question, if I may.
Mr. Rich?
And thank you so much, especially letting residents know that this is a decision between their health care provider and what their needs are and not what they learn on the internet or what they hear from somebody else. And I, and I really hope people take that to heart. The other thing is, early on in the pandemic, when we were first dealing with this issue, there was that term that people use, flatten the curve, because we were so concerned about the influx into our hospitals. It's my understanding that Providence is now limiting outpatient and elective surgeries because of the staffing that they need to take care of COVID patients. Can you elaborate on that and the rest of our system here in Mobile, if you, if you are aware of it?
Yeah, the, the health care system in Mobile right now is saturated. Two of our hospitals are not doing elective surgery. To give you an example, if somebody arrives in an ambulance, they're not able just to let the person out of the ambulance because the hospital does not have the capacity to accept the person in the ambulance. So, we're making special accommodations in the city. Mobile Fire and Rescue doing a great job in actually helping, you know, have an attendant stay with it until the hospital can accept them. How long does that last? Sometimes it's hours and up to 12 hours and even getting longer. What's going to happen is when the ambulances can unload because they don't have, you know, capacity at the hospital, then the ambulance is not available to go get the next person. And so, we're going to end up having loss of life in Mobile because of the impact of COVID on our hospital capacity. If you have a heart attack, you may not be able to get an ambulance to get to the hospital. And if you get to the hospital in your own car, they may not be able to take you into the hospital. So, same thing with motor vehicle accidents. They will not have capacity to transport and not have capacity to accept and treat. Before, we would go on diversions, and we've, I've been around a little good while, send people to Pensacola, we've sent people to Mississippi. That's not going to be an option with COVID. So, please, get vaccinated now so you don't become one of the occupants of a bed and have potential death.
Thank you. I think the community needs to know the status of our health care facilities. That's real important. It was, it really got a lot of people's attention in round, we'll say, round one, and people need to know this so that they can, like you said, please go see your physician. You're going to need them when you get sick, so try to get there and be proactive and see if you're a candidate for the vaccine. They know what's best, and you need to trust them. Thanks.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, thank you again, Dr. Ischold, for coming down this morning. You stated something about the churches and wedding reception, was noise going on in the background, and we could not really understand exactly what you said when you were speaking. Could you repeat that one more time for us, please? You said something about churches and weddings.
Large gatherings are still becoming super-spreeder events. So, people have the assumption is that we've actually cultured virus out of fully vaccinated persons. So, we know that they can actually have the virus even if fully vaccinated. So, at this point in time, with high community transmission rates, everybody needs to be very cautious about gatherings. So, if you're gathering with people larger than your immediate family, you need to be extremely cautious. And just with people who have underlying medical conditions, back to using the mask and fully vaccinated, we have not had a single medical profession, professional or group who said COVID-19 is over. We had a little bit of excitement at the beginning of the summer that the community transmission rates had gotten down below 5%. That was the number we said was critical about wearing masks. That number's back up towards 30-plus percent of community transmission rate. So, it's, we've had almost 5,000 people who have gotten COVID-19 a second time, PCR-tested twice for COVID-19. MMWR has recently published that those individuals who had COVID and not gotten vaccinated, there's about three times in likelihood they're going to end up in the hospital with a second round of COVID. So, even if you're a survivor, you need to get vaccinated.
And what is your recommendation to ride on public transportation such as, you know, buses and airplanes?
We recommend whenever riding in a vehicle with somebody you don't know their status, everybody wear face covering. So, if you happen to ride in a car with somebody who's not your immediate family and you don't know their vaccine status, wear a mask. I personally try to avoid that. We, the three of us, are all fully vaccinated individuals working in public health, and we came in three separate vehicles to get down here because of the risk of COVID-19 transmission. So, masking worked. Everybody who said, you know, how did we do this? We know historically, masking and socially distancing and not having gatherings helped break the community transmission spread. The Delta variant is much more contagious than the Alpha variant, so.
Yes, sir. Public transportation, what is your recommendation, such as buses, the city bus lines?
Wear a mask while on it and distance while on it. People need to move around, and they've got to get to their place of employment, but whenever out, wear a mask when you're on public transportation. We need to keep the economy going, we need to get people where they need to go, but we've got to be cautious about how we do it.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Ischold, let me ask, there, there are several in our community that have already been vaccinated, and that vaccination took place three, four months ago, and the questions now are coming, when do you need to go back for potentially a booster or to go through that process again? Is there any guidance that you can share to kind of put that person's mind at ease? Is there any guidance that you can share to kind of put that person's mind at ease relative to whether or not it's time for that re-up?
Question is, when do you need to have a booster? There's no CDC or no national guidance out. The Germans and Israelis are recommending it for people who have had vaccinated more than a year ago, fully vaccinated persons and those who are underlying risk for severe illness and injury. There probably will be some guidance that should be coming forth in America. So at this point in time, we recommend, again, distancing, hand washing, masking and using extra precautions as we have this high community transmission rate.
Yes, sir. Any other questions for Dr. Heschel? Anything else you'd like to share?
No, I just want to thank everybody. This is a very inconvenient medical condition for the entire country and the world. And thank everybody for being patient and let's follow the science. Follow the science when trying to make personal decisions and get good references, not what you want to hear, but what is really dependable and reliable and acceptable. Make the best decisions you can during these times and we will get through this. And we have a great community and thank everybody who's been vaccinated and thank everybody for taking it seriously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Shonda Smith?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rise to recognize three individuals from the Public Works Directorate. And we're going to go through each one of these. I'll do the first one here to recognize our Public Service Employee of the Month, Lawrence Pete Radcliffe. Pete is the supervisor in our trash department and has been with the city as of this January for 30 years. He started out as an unskilled laborer and worked his way although up to supervisor of our trash department. As you know, our trash department's been working for many months, often seven days a week, to keep up ever since our storms we had last fall, late summer, fall, working seven days a week. And then, of course, as you know, we had, because we wore that equipment out, we had a shortage of equipment and to get back on the schedule in fast order, the crews continue to work seven days a week, all under the supervision of Pete Radcliffe. So I can't think of a more deserving, and as you, as we discussed earlier, these awards for our Employee of the Month are voted on by the fellow employees. They select who they think is the deserving candidate. And so it's an honor to recognize Pete Radcliffe as our Public Service Employee of the Month.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Shonda Smith, who will recognize our Parks and Rec Employee of the Month.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This month, our Employee of the Month is Ms. Brenda Miller. Ms. Brenda Miller has been with us for quite a while and has moved around to different departments, formerly the Therapeutics Department. Like Jim said, these Employee of the Month are actually selected by their peers. And what they've shared is that she's a dedicated and hard worker. I think they utilize her because she's the organizer, so she's the one that can come and put your stuff in place and make sense of it when you can't. But she's also nice to everyone and it makes a difference for having colleagues that will step up and help you even when they have their own work to do. And Ms. Brenda has been the person that they've said that they can count on to support them. So I would like to give Ms. Brenda Miller her plaque for being Employee of the Month for Parks and Recreation.
I am very honored for receiving this and I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all of, both of you for your hard work and commitment.
We've got one more. Michelle Abico recognized our Public Works Employee at Large.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am joined today by Chief Electrical Inspector Wendy Meade and our honoree, Jeremy Jones. Jeremy is an inspector with the Inspection Services Division of Bill Mobile. He has been with the city since September of 2018. Jeremy is currently covering two territories in our area due to some personnel loss. As a result, he handles twice as many inspections as other electrical inspectors do and he's willing and without complaint. If he finishes early, he offers to help others if they're behind and he gladly takes on additional inspections if needed when others are on leave or overloaded. Last year, Jeremy was recognized by a local contractor for his thorough review of a very complicated multifamily development. Additionally, Jeremy successfully passed and obtained his master's certification. Jeremy is always professional. He's respected by his coworkers and the contractors he deals with on a regular basis. With that, I am pleased to recognize him as the Public Works at Large Bill Mobile Employee of the Month. Jeremy, his work, he likes to walk the walk and prefers not to say much today, but thank you, Jeremy, for what you do. For us.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much and keep up the good work.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We promptly moved and second any discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on September 26th in Cathedral Square, October 23rd in Cooper Riverside Park, October 1st and 2nd on Leshure Road.
So moved.
Second.
Publicly moved and second any discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to consider a right-of-way fee for a vacation of an alley located between North Washington Avenue and North Dearborn Street. Also, today is a public hearing to consider the vacation of an alley located between North Washington Avenue and North Dearborn Street.
Is there anyone here that would like to offer any commentary during this particular public hearing? Yes, sir?
Yes, good morning. Jason Smith here for Parker and Alice Buckley. I'm with the law firm, Venders, for you, Braden Smith.
Mr. Smith, if you could speak a little louder, maybe get more into the mic.
Again, Jason Smith on behalf of Alice and Parker Buckley. Mr. Buckley is the, one of the petitioners who spearheaded this effort to vacate this unused alleyway and I believe all the paperwork's in order. The one thing he asked me to address to the council was a request that the fee be waived or lowered on the, I believe $10,000 based on his point being that the property is now going to be put into the tax rolls in perpetuity and that there will be tax income coming off of this previously unused property. So he just asked me to ask the council to consider that in their deliberation.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? Not the public hearings closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Darlene Martin.
Ms. Martin, Ms. Darlene Martin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Darlene Martin. I live at 2411 Cross Street in the Africa Town Community and I'm a member and First Lady of the New Light Missionary Baptist Church in the Campground Community. I am also president and CEO of Utopian Legacy CDC. I have worked for two mayors in Pritchard, Ron Davis and Troy Eifert. I would like to speak on two issues. I would like to recognize August as Black Business Month. I would like to say hats off to all the unsung heroes who have been on the battlefield. I am sure the mayor, city council, Mobile Chamber and all those other guys who represent us have some events and proclamations to follow. Secondly, I would like to commend the mayor, city council and official staff here for all the hard work you are doing in the city by informing the individuals of all the hard work you're doing in the community, especially Campground. I know many of you, like me, have been almost beaten over the head with a relentless barrage of commercials saying what we, who are in the community, should be seen, yet we're not. I know you believe that taking out one drug house out of a community like Campground is going to bring change. It does not. For a systemic and sustainable change to happen, there must be much addition. Addition like programs, funding and hands-on. This message is for the citizens. Even when it looks like all hope is gone, know this, the cavalry is on the way. God still sits high and looks low. And for all of you with a fiduciary commitment to oversee the least of them like Jesus spoke in Matthew 25 and 40, know this, the cavalry is on the way. This cavalry won't have cameras, microphones, extra staff who look around to see what can change, still no change. For we carry the tools of real change like rakes, shovels, weed eaters and a barrage of programs to be implemented. Maybe someone in this assembly, like the mayor or his official staff, city council, someone who's running for office or someone watching across the country, will reach out to someone like me who quit her job eight weeks ago to put real boots on the ground to make these shelf-ready plans that I drug in here today. All it needs is the watering of funding poured down on it for change to happen. So if you still can sleep at night after knowing all that I've said, well, may God richly bless you. But know this, on this 10th day of August, just like Charlton Heston said to Pharaoh, who thought he was the do-all, be-all too, but God. Moses said, be careful the next words that come out of your mouth, for we know the real cavalry is on the way.
Not exactly what you signed up for, but you're not controlling that.
Michelle Strother?
I don't see anybody moving up there, Ms. Ma'am Clark. Oh, there she is, okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Michelle Strother. I live at 1815 Indian Creek Drive North and I'm here to discuss with you an issue I'm having with erosion at my house. In the 80s, in response to destructive flooding, the Corps of Engineers.
Ms. Strother?
Yes?
If you could, get as close to the mic as you feel safe getting to so that we might properly hear you.
Okay. This better?
That's better, yes ma'am.
The Corps of Engineers made modifications to Three Mile Creek. They included insulation wears, channel widening, deepening, construction on one mile bypass channel that resulted in insulation and degradation of historic stream settlement. When my house was built, the neighborhood was vastly dis- disparate. In 1980s, as part of my property was taken so a ditch can be put in across the street from Three Mile Creek so that the water can feed in. The engineering department has come out to my house and acknowledged that there is an issue with erosion on my property involving Three Mile Creek and that ditch going in. My issue is that I would like to you guys to take and fix it because I have issues with, every year we have foxes running through my yard. I have a child and a dog and I don't want anything to happen to them. Also, I have had issues where I had to report to the police of people encroaching on my property, trespassing and things like that at night, going through my stuff. So I would like to be able to eventually put up a fence so I can protect my property. So I wanted to know whether or not the city or the mayor could take and make available the funds to be able to fix it. That's it?
District one?
Okay, somebody going to respond?
The only thing I can say is, we're aware, our folks have been out there. I understand that there's been some trees that have been removed along that ditch and both, excuse me, Alabama Power is going to be removing a few other trees because I understand there's some trees in some lines and our crew will come in behind and do some as well and look to maybe do some stabilization along there. But it's really, there's really no significant issue that we can see right now, but we intend to go out and do some, you know, minor upgrades to the area that's most adjacent to the house. The fence, there's not a lot we can do with that. I mean, that's, that's not something the city can do, so.
Has that been communicated to Ms. Strother?
I can't hear, what, say again?
Is she aware of those plans?
I believe so. I think our crew has been out there fairly recently and talked to them and I believe Alabama Power is going to be working on their stuff in the next few weeks or so is what I understand.
Can I, I, they came onto my property, well, the first time.
We don't allow that.
And they come to my property and they didn't come. So I contacted them and said, hey, no one was here. I was here all day, came by my property, no one came by. I had been at home all day and then they came back out and then I had a discussion with them. They told me they did not have the funding to be able to do it and I had been put on the list. That's why I'm here today, to ask for funding, to be able to do it because I can, I'm not asking you guys to put up my fence. I'm going to put it up myself, but I need you to take care of the issue with erosion before I can put it up.
Mr. DeLapp, can you have someone get Ms. Strother's information because we have heard what she's saying and she's, she isn't asking for fencing according to her commentary. Is there someone from your staff that she could interface with so that you all could
communicate?
Yeah, I think we're already in communication with her and we'll follow back up with her.
Let me, let me step in here because I understand that nobody's directing the staff, but understand that there is a plan in place. Lead department's involved because there are two different issues here and what Director DeLapp has told you is accurate. We have sent our engineering crews out there to fix what we can fix. The erosion, on the other hand, is because of another issue that is related to property that is not related to the city. So our folks are going to try to deal with and remediate the issues. What we're trying to make a distinction is, there's a, there's a tree issue and then there's the private property issue. The city cannot legally do work on the private property. I just want to make that distinction. We think this may help remediate some of the issue, but it will not fix the problem of the erosion. I don't want to give any false, false hope here that that's not being communicated to the council. So understanding that we're already dealing with that issue.
Mr. President, I disagree with, with the assessment we just heard. The city, to divert the water going through Three Mile Creek, the city acquired part of her property and they dug a ditch to send the water that way. The bank along the ditches he rode is coming all up toward her house. And she says she can't put a fence down around her property because all of that is falling over into the ditch. And the city is going rag around the roses. It's a city, the issue is who ditch is it? It's the city's ditch. We dangling around $58 million in Missouri, fix the ditch. The city needs to go out there and fix that ditch. It's our ditch. I'm not concerned about Alabama Power, Comfort, Mobile, Water, Moss. I'm concerned about the city owns the ditch, the ditch that he rode in. We can fix it. We have done it in other communities. We have done this in other. it. We have done it in other communities. We have done this in other communities. Where the ditch was eroding, the city sent somebody out there and fixed the ditch. Now, the ditch might be in the wrong place, but it needs fixing. It's on the street that I live on. The ditch needs fixing, and all this stuff, we're, me, 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 Mr. Mayor, I could you to get involved in this. All she is saying is that she needs to protect her family. She need to put a fence back there. They got wild foxes and everything else. She is trying, she can't let her kids, she can't let nobody go out there because she has no fence. She wants to put a fence up, but the ditch is falling down. They're saying, "It ain't that bad off. We can get to you sometime." The house ain't falling. I mean, that's appear to be what they're saying. The ditch is a long way from the house. It'll be, it'll probably be 10 years for it to get to the house. No. She want the banks along that ditch fixed so it won't erode no more, so she can put a fence up and protect her family. I would like to see the mayor get involved in that.
Thank you, Ms. Strother.
Greg Foster.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Greg Foster. I live at 2500 Granada Avenue in downtown Otis Hill. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, and Mayor Stevenson and his staff, I come before you this morning with a very simple request, and that is to not leave us out of the spending plan for the COVID relief package. I come as an advocate for the Fire Retirees Association, and I'm sure our request would be repeated by other retiree groups, but I can only speak for the Mobile Fire Rescue Department retiree. I've had some several conversations lately with some of you individually, and I have heard your desire and your heart to do something significant for the retiree. I believe this would be that opportunity, considering the source of the funds, and even though it's a one-time event. The current proposal, as I understand it, through the mayor's offices, to give a $5,000 per employee for a full-time employee, and a $2,500 for each part-time employee. I think that my membership should be given due consideration based on our years of service to this city, ranging from 20, 25, 30, 35, and sometimes 40 years of service, the dedication that it takes on the job to reach a retirement. I'm thankful for the past accomplishments by this council, and the mayor, and former members of this governing body. But I believe also that our years of service carry a slightly heavier consideration than a part-time position, given the total number of hours, days, weeks, months, years, and whatever, serving, on a job, serving the citizens of Mobile in this great city. The retirees I represent consider their employment here as not only fulfilling, but also a calling. It was more than just a job. It was an honorable profession, filled with both victory, and yet sometimes the agony of defeat. Rest assured, though, that no matter what call we answered, we gave it our all. Next month, for the first time, there will be a luncheon sponsored by the fire chief, Chief Leamy, and the Mobile Fire Department, and also sponsored by our chaplain, Ed Conick, to honor the retiree. Also, Chaplain Conick's annual observance of the 9/11 tragedy will be held at Mobile Memorial Gardens to recognize the last alarmers who have passed away during the previous year. And as a punctuation to that, locally here, I've helped bury almost 50 retirees from the Mobile Fire Department, three years. So the list goes on, every day. By the way, this ceremony this year marks the 20th anniversary of 9/11.
I'm sorry. So that's, your time has expired.
And I'm sorry. I cannot hear.
Your time has expired.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
It's my understanding, the American Rescue Plan, if that's where you're saying the funds for retirees should go, the way the plan is crafted, you have to have been employed and working through the pandemic months. It, I'm not certain, but I'm pretty confident that retirees, unless they retired within that timeframe, could not, by virtue of the federal guidelines, receive resources from this particular for any kind of bonus. Now, we are going into the budget cycle, and I don't, I've never seen any drafts as far as any plans. Maybe the administration has some information they could share, but usually the retirees are looked at at a budget cycle for cost of living and COLAs and whatnot, so. But this plan that we're debating today, that I believe you made reference that that's where you thought funds could go, would not qualify for what you're asking. And if I'm incorrect, I certainly would take that--
Even though we were just as impacted by the COVID crisis as anyone else, and probably more so due to our age and infirmities.
I understand what you're saying, but the guidelines from Washington.
I understand. Should I stop now or continue with my address?
May I pardon?
Should I stop talking now or continue with my--
Oh, yeah, your three minutes.
I'm sorry. Your time has expired.
I just wanted to clarify the use of--
Your time, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You did a good job. Gregory Dennis.
Good morning. My name is Gregory Dennis. My address is 5919 Wrenwood Drive, Sow. The reason I'm here today is to address the issues in Hillsdale Heights subdivision. As previously communicated, the University of South Alabama drew a red line in Hillsdale Heights subdivision mouth, showing the property they wanted to acquire. This created the red line of discrimination by the City of Mobile and University of South Alabama. The City of Mobile allowed the university to illegally barricade the streets in Hillsdale Heights subdivision. University of South Alabama ran the residents out of the area they wanted to acquire behind the red line of discrimination by failing to maintain the University of South Alabama property. The City of Mobile has willfully and intentionally failed to maintain the property in Hillsdale Heights over the past 10-plus years in an effort to assist USA in their effort to acquire the property, with the intention of condemning the area so they could justify giving the property to the University of South Alabama. What did the mayor do wrong? I informed Dr. John Smith that the barricades were illegal, who was the interim president at University of South Alabama, and was the executive vice president at the time. I requested that he inform me who gave USA the authority to illegally barricade the streets in my neighborhood. Dr. Smith emailed me back, informing me to contact Gina Gregory, as she responded to Dr. Smith, informing him not to have me call him, have me call the mayor's office. Without any legal justification, the mayor's office responded in an email. USA was given the authority to illegally barricade the streets of my neighborhood to avoid dumping. Ditches thrown off car windows and dumped all over the City of Mobile, but the mayor don't barricade the streets. Is the mayor in District 7 Councilwoman discriminating against the residents of Hillsdale Heights? The record shows the mayor in District 7 Councilwoman uploaded 100-year-old oak trees on Oshel Road surrounding the mayor's neighborhood, just to build sidewalks. However, the mayor in District 7 Councilwoman refused to repair the streets and infrastructure in my neighborhood. District 7 Councilwoman stated she didn't think it would be a good use of District 7 funds to repair the streets in my neighborhood. What's wrong with this picture? I'm asking the local news stations to investigate this matter and inform the citizens of Mobile what actions should a citizen take if they are being bullied and discriminated against by the city officials. The record clearly confirms the mayor and District 7 City Councilperson discriminated against the residents of Hillsdale Heights. Thank you.
Timothy Hollis.
Timothy Hollis, 1924 Sales Street. To start the day, I echo the sounds of Ms. Martin. I too became an entrepreneur, just so I could be able to attend these council meetings on a religious matter, due to the fact that they're at inconvenient times for our citizens. The issue at hand today is about the public library workers not being identified as city employees, yet, to my understanding, it is that they retire from the City of Mobile, as it was recorded last week. The library workers have served, and they do still continue to serve, as an essential service. It is said that we fear modifying the definition of a city employee for the said benefits, out of fear that other groups may want to apply themselves. Well, I say if they apply themselves to be essential and serve our citizens in times of dire need, then let them apply. Yet, we're here today to discuss an issuance of $400,000 to be paid out for a painting project of a bridge maintained by a service not affiliated with the City of Mobile and not affiliated as having City of Mobile employees, that is CSX. I hope that we look into consideration on that agenda item with the same consideration that we look at that for those public workers who work for our Mobile Public Library. Furthermore, waived transit workers should also be included within receiving some essential pay. I shouldn't have to go deep into that because we all understand how essential they are. Also, my final question here, well, my only question, and I hope that it is answered, not with political jargon, but with some answer of truth and morality. Is it true that public workers from the Public Works Department are not granted overtime hours to conduct Mobile City business, but were offered overtime to conduct business in Pritchett City Limits? Furthermore, did Pritchett pay for the services? I yield my time.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Stevenson, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. I signed up for three separate items, but I'm going to keep them focused on the ARP. As a man of degree in music, one might be well-learned on the uniqueness of individual voices. One is not well-rounded in that degree until he knows how to connect each of those voices into one sound. We see here something that is not reflective of a combination of sounds, rather an emphasis on a certain persuasion, a certain tone, a certain style, a certain genre of sound. And that is not reflective of what I believe is best for the city, or what I also believe is stipulated by the law. We see here where we have an opportunity to utilize resources to help the less fortunate, to help those who have been most underserved. Yet we see a series of finessing going on from people making the decisions. There's been confusion about the dates, about citizen participation. There's been confusion about how the resources actually go to the people that need it. In 1985, this city transitioned to a place in which we would guarantee the prevention of matters such as this, in which those who were left behind, those who were left out, those who were unconsidered, they would have the opportunity to be a part of the process. I'm thankful for people of the shoulders that we stand on now, such as Senator Figures, who put his life on the line, to ensure that people had this opportunity. You never understand what it means about what someone could really come down here and say, because since last Tuesday and today, I've heard a plethora of conversations, a plethora of comments. But each of you, each of you that are in this process of making the decision, I know you directly, I know you personally, so I'm not even gonna bring that tenor to this meeting. August 24th is very close. How you vote today is gonna set the trajectory of the City of Mobile for the next several decades. We don't have to get into the tenor, the pomp and circumstance, the over-amplification of what this is. These are taxpayer dollars. We complain about not using the money we already have, and you get an opportunity, free resources to fix this up that everybody comes and has complaints about week after week, and we're still contemplating and debating on how to use the resources? You vote today. We vote in two weeks.
Mr. President, I would like to go back, I was trying not to say anything, Mr. President. I would like to go back to Mr. Dennis, who came down to plead for infrastructure for Hillsdale. And I would like to briefly paint a picture that I think everybody can see, which is get on, get on Coda Road at Cottill Road. Coda Road, because Coda Road separates Mobile Terry from Hillsdale. Comes right through the center, and you're gonna notice, from Cottill Road to Apple Boulevard, Coda Road has a third lane added. Curbs, curbs, sidewalks, overhead lighting, the whole thing, all the way up to Apple Boulevard.
No, no curve and gutter.
But once you head toward Hillsdale, you got holes, hollers, ditches, all the way past Ziegler Boulevard. Not one nickel was spent to go that way. And that has been the story when you come down to lower-murder-income people. It just keeps weaving and bobbing. This, these are federal funds sent to us by the MPO, and they're selecting what to do. I bet you Ziegler Boulevard going on, 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 but Coda Road simply put on brakes, and you're just as right as you can be. That day has come and gone. Time is off of that, and I hope we've seen the last of that. You're just as right as you could be. You all were ignored.
November 2nd.
Since we have a number of people signing to speak with ARP, I'm gonna call-- Since we have a number of people signing to speak with ARP, I'm going to call Anna Bush regarding Resolution zero-three-six-two-seven.
How many people we got, Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk?
What's that number again, please? Zero-three-six-two-seven. Thank you.
How many we got? Seven.
Is the volume okay?
Obviously not.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody's kind of hard to hear, I think, up here. My name is Anna Bush. I live at twenty-one Beenville Avenue in Mobile. I believe I'm in District Two. This is a consent resolution, so I must confess, I don't know a whole lot about speaking on those, but I was a little, wow, I want to be careful because I don't want to excoriate someone in public, but I'm a little concerned that there has been an appointment or a potential appointment to a board for the City of Mobile Animal Shelter, who has a history of overcrowding animals on their property, and in fact, did have a number of animals seized from their property in the county, by the county shelter that were taken in subsequently by a private rescue. So certainly, people change, and I would love to have this person working in a positive way, but I'm not a hundred percent sure that is an appropriate appointment at this time. And so, I, I believe that the people at the diocese know who I'm speaking of, and the council knows, and probably people that are involved in the animal welfare in this community are pretty familiar, so I would appreciate your consideration prior to affirming that appointment. And I know that is a challenging thing to do with a consent resolution, so again, I really, I don't want to war with anybody else. I've got enough enemies. I work in animal welfare, but I do hope that everyone will give that a lot of thought. And, and by saying I work in animal welfare, I am a volunteer at the city shelter, who is literally in the city shelter six days a week. I go every morning for about three hours before I go to my day job, which is why I dress like this for my day job now. But I try to take Sundays off just to do so, and I find a very hardworking staff without a lot of resources, so I hesitate to see an advisory committee come in saying, well, they're all doing all these things wrong, especially if that committee includes people who may have some skeletons in their closet as well. So I hope that vague as it may be is, is food for thought. Thank you.
Okay, Sheri Graham. Sheri Graham.
Which one's she on?
All of these are ARP.
Good morning. My name is Sheri Graham. I live at five-one-three-A Magnolia Road, oh-six. I am here today representing the Gulf Coast Mental Health Coalition. We are here to support the American Rescue Plan recommended by the South Alabama Economic Roundtable and submitted to City Council last week. The Gulf Coast Mental Health Coalition focus is community health, especially the mental health of all citizens who live, work, and play here. Families in the qualified census tract areas have behavioral health needs before, during the pandemic, and today. They are limited to access to health insurance and healthcare facilities or service providers. That includes counseling, intervention, treatment, and prevention for drug abuse, suicide, domestic violence, and child abuse, mental illness, at-risk behavior, and the list goes, the list goes on. Mental health issues within the family unit or with individuals who have support or have no support do not talk about the issue of their mental illness or their mental health. It is a topic that is hidden. We must create a collaborative multimedia approach to outreach to promote safe and confidential open dialogue opportunities on behavioral and physical health topics. During nineteen fifteen, or nineteen fifteen, twenty fifteen, and twenty sixteen, the suicide and gun violence rates decreased in the city of Mobile, Mobile County, and Baldwin County. A group of eighteen individuals who represent mental health, individual businesses, government, public safety, came together from the two counties to form the South Alabama Mental Wellness Conference. For the next three years, we worked with the Institute of On Violence Abuse in USA, Continuing Medical Education, to provide nine half-day workshops and thirty-five continuing education real talk programs. We had over six hundred people who attended one or more of the programs, who covered all of the issues that we are still seeing happen in this community today. The city of Mobile is in crisis in not serving families who live in marginalized communities, who continue to ask, where can I seek help? How can I get help? And who is there to help? Lack of access to mental health care still, still exists. The current plan submitted does not include mental health or behavioral health at all. We continue to have a critical health care issue in our city. Education is the first step to shattering the silence through creating a safe plan for conversation and listening. The first step is to provide local community outreach for all people who live in the qualified census tracts. In summary, the Gulf Coast Mental Health Coalition supports the South Alabama Economic Roundtable American Rescue Plan as it was developed from community input. We encourage City Council to stop and consider your constituents. A plan that provides for mental health care can become the foundation to create a community of nonviolence, peace building, safe and healthier communities where empathy and kindness become a way of behavior. Remember, I am where I am today.
Ms. Brown.
Because my mind goes there first. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Ms. Brown, thank you for coming down this morning. My question is to you, the Gulf Coast, your name of your nonprofit is Gulf Coast?
Mental Health Coalition. We are not a nonprofit. We are a community group.
Community, it's a community group?
Correct.
Okay, then, okay. And how long you have y'all been around?
Since twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
And where do y'all currently receive, you know, funds from? It's just a group, correct? It's no nonprofit or?
We are a community group who has worked with a donation from the Mobile Sheriff's Department. In our beginning year, we leveraged a thousand dollars into ten thousand dollars to help us develop our program that we offered throughout the city, throughout both counties, Baldwin and Mobile. Yes, sir.
And the reason I ask, because we met with some people earlier this weekend. I'm a big advocate for mental health. How many, besides Alterport Point, how many nonprofit groups are out there to support mental health? Because I never did get a firm answer on how many groups is out there, not just, you know, just those, you know, small pockets of people, but just officially people that actually do this every day throughout the day.
That's an interesting question. Thank you for asking. What I can tell you is this, when we talk about mental health, we have to include everything that surrounds mental health, including housing, food, employment, economics, transportation. All of that encompasses the health, the mental health of a community. When you feel good about yourself and you are well, you will do better. The nonprofit organizations that serve the city of Mobile and Mobile County, because many of them cover both various variables, including, including with Baldwin, I think the number is well over fifteen hundred who provide services, but I'm sure that number is growing because I have seen more individual nonprofit startup in the communities because they want to serve their communities. I don't have that number, but I will get that information to you and get back with you on that question, sir.
I really do appreciate that.
Be glad to. Thank you.
Teresa Bettis.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. My name is Teresa Bettis. My address is six-oh-two Belair Boulevard, Mobile, Alabama, three-six-six-oh-six. I am speaking as a member and representative of the South Alabama Economic Roundtable, further known as SOR, Sayer in my presentation. I have a number of questions and perspectives for the council. How will the council proceed with reconciling the two comprehensive plans it has received for spending of the fifty-eight million point two dollars ARP funds? A plan from both the mayor and a plan for Sayer has been submitted to you. For the sake of transparency, members of the council said on June the twenty-ninth that there would be a public hearing to discuss the ARP funds. When will the public hearing take place, and if not, why? Has the council sought an opinion from their attorney for clarity on the ARP reporting requirements and the timelines to report? And was Sayer's plan submitted and/or ever advanced to the Finance Committee for review and consideration? And if not, then why? Is anyone on the council at this time able to provide any answers to those questions?
Mr. Preston.
Mr. Davis.
As, as with respect to the public hearing, this matter's been on the agenda numerous times, and every time it appears on the agenda, we have a public hearing on it. Anyone who wants to speak can get up and talk about it. So the, the public hearings, the, the, the Council Finance Committee has had, I think, two meetings. We didn't take any public comment, but we had an opportunity to ask questions about it, and then, as I said, it's been on the agenda a number of different times where we've taken public comment.
If, if I could comment?
Will I be able to reclaim my time while you guys are responding?
She has that, she has a question.
I'll wait to your, I don't know how much time, but...
Ms. Bettis, you asked a question, and they were attempting to answer the question that you, that you profited. Now, we'll stop now and let you finish your presentation.
How much time does she have left, so she knows? One minute?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The city, through the mayor's plan, and if passed by the Mobile City Council, will have missed a unique opportunity to respond and morally address and advance equity, especially of those who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality and exacerbated by COVID. To be clear, within the city of Mobile, identify persistent areas of poverty fall within African-American communities of Tolmanville, Crichton, The Bottoms, The Campground, Maysville, Hillsdale Heights, Mobile Terrace, and Afriktown. These communities have spoken clearly on what their needs are through community forums held by Sayer. Yet, once again, the voice of the people will have been overlooked and disrespected through the passage of the mayor's plan. We are disheartened after efforts made to have the people come out and clearly articulate their needs that none, not even one, of their identifiable needs are being taken into consideration by the city administration under the mayor's plan. Was that the second bill?
That's Tom.
Well...
I just have one sentence left. The council serves as the people's legislative body, as the people's operative check and balance. With the power to amend the mayor's exclusionary plan devoid of the people's wishes, now's the time for the council to finally put the people first. Thank you, and if you have any response to my questions?
If I could comment?
Do you have a response to anything that Ms. Bettis asked?
Yes, and just for at least my clarification, when we started this, there were line items that seemed to follow amounts of money, but what was discovered in dialoguing back and forth on this process was we had to come to some kind of closure for the first report, which would look at classifications and then put allocated funds into them, but that the line items were not necessarily what would come before council in the future under contractual agreements for spending the money. So what you're looking at are like the areas where, for instance, premium pay for essential workers, address negative economic impacts, equity-focused services. So all of those have funds that have been allocated for them, not necessarily exactly for what was initially lined, like GAFERS, because maybe that's not an affordable housing that's amenable to the community, but the idea that there would be money for east of I sixty-five for affordable housing, it, the money was placed there. So again, it, it's a little premature to assume that when, when these things come to council for agreement on the next report, because the first report was put your buckets out there and how much you want to fill them with, but you did not have to give the exact program. That's, that's not information that the feds are looking for at this time. If I'm incorrect about this, then I need to also get some more clarification from the administration. Okay? Does, does that help you to, even Ms. Graham, who spoke to us about looking at mental health issues, that could easily be a negative economic impact.
Ms. Bettis, you, you can, you can be seated now.
I'd like to respond to her if I could.
Well, no, that's okay. I, I just hope that, I, I don't want anyone to walk away after this council who has to help the administration write a report that is going to be the final things that are going to happen with this amount of funding, and it's an exorbitant amount of funding. I just, I would just like the community to know that, because what is being expressed is though these things cannot happen with these resources.
But they will not happen, with all due respect.
Ms. Bettis, Ms. Bettis, your time has expired, which is why I was asking.
You must be a fortune teller.
Thank you.
It's not possible. It will come before council and be very debatable at that point.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson, then Mr. Davis.
I would like for everybody to hear me out. We can vote down the mayor's proposal today and lose fifty-eight million dollars. Today, we're trying to, we're trying to save fifty-eight million dollars. Our goal today is save fifty-eight million dollars, and in order to save fifty-eight million dollars, we have to send back, we have to answer the federal government. So we're going to, the mayor put his proposal up there, he's going to send his proposal to Washington, D.C., and if it's approved, we're not going to, we're not spending one nickel today. Let's spend a nickel. We're just trying to get the fifty-eight million. Once we get the fifty-eight million, then it's going to be spent in contracts. The community will be able, the round table, your table, all of them, will be able to submit contracts to this council on what you want to provide to any community in this You submit, you submit your proposal to the mayor, the mayor put it on the council, put it on the council agenda. If the mayor doesn't put it on the council agenda, you submit a copy to us, and when somebody puts something up there, we can vote that down and put yours up there. We can, we can amend anything that's placed on this council, once they add a dollar sign to it and put it on this council. We can change it. There's nothing in stone right now. We're not overlooking anybody. We're trying to save the money, but once it comes back in terms of a contract, that's when we, that's when the rubber meets the road. We do not have a contract here today. We're trying to save fifty-eight million dollars. I'm not voting against fifty-eight million dollars. We're going to keep the fifty-eight million dollars if I have anything to do with it, but when, when we get the fifty-eight million dollars, then you out there will be able to submit a contract to the mayor, stay what you would like, if you would like to make sure that people don't catch the virus, and you've got a way to do that, submit your contract to the mayor, put it on council agenda, you in. Whoever you think has, has been ignored, we got a chance to ingratiate them. Whoever you think has been ignored, we got a chance to ingratiate them.
Thank you.
The point is, we're not spending any money today. We're trying to save the $58 million. We're gonna spend the money after we get, we don't have no money. We're gonna spend the money after we get the money, in terms of a contract. And each one of you will have a chance to submit your contract on what you think ought to be done. Submit it to the mayor. If he put it on the council agenda, we'll deal with it. If he does not put it on the council agenda, you submit it to us. When he puts something up there we don't think is right, we're gonna take it off and put yours up there.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
I agree with Mr. Richardson. We're not spending any money today. We're identifying some very broad buckets on which we might spend money later on down the road. Now, one thing I'd like to make absolutely clear. We got 195,000 people in the city of Mobile. Each one of them has a different idea on how to spend this money. And we've heard from a lot of them. And just because we don't adopt your idea on how to spend the money doesn't mean we haven't listened to the people. We've listened to a lot of different organizations and a lot of different individuals. Now, the responsibility is up here to adopt an overall plan like the one we have up for us, and then decide on specific provisions later on down the road. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank Ms. Bettis and the Roundtable for putting that report together, and that report did not go in vain. Some of the things that was listed on the report, and as I had told you all on Sunday, I agree with some of them and some of the things I don't agree with it. You know, for instance, you know, with the after-school program, and I'm a big advocate for schools, I'm partners with Pillins, Craighead, Maryvale, B.C. Rain, Gilleyard, even Williamson, and that's not even my district. But the school board received the literacy act money, millions of dollars that Alabama received. They got the Esther Act One money, millions of dollars. The Esther Act Two money, millions of dollars. The Esther Act Three money, millions of dollars. And pretty much, the school board can pretty much spend that money on just buy anything except for food and incentives that will come in place of after-school programs. If I have, between my citizens in District Three, with the school board got millions of dollars versus trying to fix some street and infrastructure, they're gonna say fix streets and infrastructure, because the school board's not gonna put not one dime into the streets and infrastructure program. One thing I do agree with is the mental health, and that's what Ms. Graham had came down earlier, and you know, and that's why I asked her for a list, because on this list say social service assistance, which they can fall into, the mental health. Mental health is very, very serious in the city of Mobile. I mean, a lot of the crime, you know, that we got going on our communities, you know, pretty much because of mental health. I had to call Chief Barber a couple of times because mental health people at my door knocking on our door and stuff like that. I'm a big advocate for mental health. But again, and even with the food, you know, program that you had on the list also, you know, the administration has already started working on different food banks throughout the communities, especially District One, Two, and Three. And as I had stated to you on Sunday, that Reverend Clark and Reverend Fraser of Revelation Baptist Church and First Baptist Church have been working with the administration to establish even a food bank in the Maysville District Three area and everything. A lot of the stuff that was on the list have been addressed, it just has not been publicized, or some things have been working out of other funds and everything. But some of the information that you all had on the list is very valuable, and it has not went to vain. And again, I'd like to thank you all so much for the work that you all have done. And again, your work has not went in vain at all. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I would just like to piggyback behind Councilman Small. I had an opportunity to sit down with the South Alabama Economic Roundtable officials, and I was most impressed with what they presented. And we have an opportunity to do a lot of the things they have up here for instance, youth and young adult job training. We're gonna need that. We're gonna need that. But someone is gonna have to send...
Mr. President.
I can't hear.
Mr. President, no interruption of Mr. Richardson, but I'm having a tough time. There's a continuous sidebar conversation, upper right-hand corner of the room, and if you could just ask everyone to...
I agree.
...limit their conversation to outside unless it's at the podium?
We're gonna ask any persons in this auditorium that might be carrying on a sidebar conversation, if you could take that on the outside of the auditorium, please. Thank you.
They're still talking. They can't hear you, I don't believe, Mr. President.
They're still talking. Any persons that might be talking now, that means that you need to carry that very conversation on outside of the auditorium.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
That very one needs to go on the outside of the auditorium. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would just like to say that this group has done a monumental job in trying to aim at where they believe the money ought to go. And my, what I would like to say to them, we have that opportunity, but it has to come back as a contract. We can't, we can't take what you recommend and supplement what Master Dempson has on the agenda with that, because we're not spending any money. We need to spend some money on this. We're not spending any money today. This need to come back as a contract, that this is what either you wish to do, or however you want to do it. It's a lot of opportunities for community organizations to get involved with this money. You can provide a lot of these things. Mr. President, the talk is still going on. But I would just like to commend them also, but there is an opportunity for them or other groups in the community to come back with a contract on what you will provide.
I also had an opportunity to have had several conversations with representatives from Sayer, and have left, again, impressed by many of the things that they brought forward. And I believe with the generalized nature of this plan, that many of the tenants of their plan can be built into one of these buckets. Bucket One, well, not Bucket One, but certainly Buckets Two, Five, and the other buckets concerning social services assistance, and also concerning housing rehabilitation and affordable housing, affordable rental housing. When we first got this plan, there was a specific item dealing with the GAFers building downtown Mobile that was totaling over $8 million. Those resources have been recalibrated into some very generalized budgets that we hope and we're working to realize in all historic communities. Afriktown, The Campground, Bottom, the Maysville community. That's where the most impact can be had. And so, as this budget is approved, and we come back with RFPs and contracts, I'm hopeful that many of the tenants of Sayer's plan can be built into the buckets that are outlined here. So I don't want anyone leaving here today thinking that their work was in vain, that they've done all of that for naught, and I appreciate the work that they've been doing. But we also, having been here almost eight years, have a pretty good working understanding of what the communities that sent us here wanted us to do. And one of the first things I'm hearing about is rehabbing and redeveloping existing communities. And we have an opportunity with this pot of excess money to do that, to make Lafayette Heights, and to make Carver Court and other communities in District Two better. If you look at what is itemized, it's going in our neighborhoods, from Woodcock Redevelopment to the Affordable Housing Fund in the Maysville, in the Michigan Avenue area, that's $14 million. The item in Michigan Avenue and Woodcock, that's nearly $19 million of the budget itself. That's east of I-65, ladies and gentlemen. So let's continue to have dialogue. This is a unique opportunity. We ought not be falling out with one another. Let's continue to work together to effect the most change in the most communities.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
I'd just like to be absolutely clear. I also appreciate the work the South Alabama Economic Roundtable has done. I think their report is very good and very interesting, and there are a number of commendable components to it. My objection is to the imputation that the council has not listened to the people of Mobile in taking up this issue. Thank you.
Oren Davis. And following Oren Davis is Jill Chinawith.
Good morning.
I am Oren Davis, a senior citizen and a resident of 461 Cedar Avenue, Mobile, Alabama 36603, District Two. I stand before you today to share my recent experience in several of the South Alabama Economic Roundtables Town Hall meetings. The Town Hall meetings were conducted by concerned citizens that were interested in making sure that the use of the funding coming to the city of Mobile is compliant with the Executive Order 13985, specifically advancing racially equity and support for underserved communities. Open and in-depth discussions were afforded all citizens in the attendance at each of these Town Halls. We had the opportunity to share concerns and needs of our community. We left the Town Hall meeting optimistic that the information would be received and favorably acted upon by the mayor, the Mobile City Council, and the administration. Thorough discussions were had on the eligible areas, including Executive Order 13985. They are as follows. Food insecurity, employment assistance, mental health, childcare, youth services, rental and utility assistance, mortgage, economic, public health, transportation assistance, PPA and cleaning supplies, affordable housing, broadband assistance and services. As a resident of District Two, I am more concerned with the dilapidated housing, homelessness, lack of economic opportunity, and blight. I witnessed these concerns daily as I moved through the neighborhood. I was very encouraged by President Biden's Executive Order authorizing the American Rescue Plan, and I believe that those responsible for allocating its use would use the opportunity to create generational change. Executive Order 13985 was developed for the purpose of answering the prayer that you pray each Tuesday before the city council meeting. This is a prayer for liberty and justice for all citizens in this great city of Mobile. I urge you to use this information gathered and provided to the plan by the Southern Alabama Economic Roundtable to grant your prayer for all. Thank you for your uninvited attention. Good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Council President Manzi and members of the council and mayor stepped out, so I'm also here to talk about the coronavirus state, local, and fiscal recovery funds and the South Alabama Economic Roundtable. And you all have addressed many issues. And so I do support Teresa and her efforts and everyone else in that group. But also, as the president and CEO of the United Way Southwest Alabama at 218 St. Francis Street, my residence sits at 753 St. Francis Street, so I'm pretty stupid, I live five blocks from my office, but anyway. So what we're asking today is for that support for them, but also, as the United Way president and CEO, that you all consider using nonprofits in this community when you sort this plan out. Please call on us. We've tried to contact the mayor's office consistently without having calls back. We would love to be part of this plan. This is what we do. We're not just fundraisers. We're also community conveners, planners, and implementers. During COVID and the hurricane, we distributed over a half a million extra dollars besides our regular campaign funds that we distribute. And we did that in four rounds. We got the money out immediately to the people in this community who needed it, immediately. There was only a month's time difference between when we received funds and distributed them. We know what we're doing. Other nonprofits that are not just part of the United Way know what they're doing. Please utilize us as you move forward. We ask that, and we ask that you listen to us. We have lots of data. We talked to the constituents. We're boots on the ground. I worked for two partner agencies for 25 years before taking this position, so I have a little bit of knowledge in this, and so do so many other people in this community that work in nonprofits. Thank you all for your time. We appreciate you. And please remember, call us, utilize us when you get the money so that we do get this to the people who need it the most. Thank you all for your time.
Mr. President.
And if I could...
Yeah, I have a question. So you all, how many nonprofits do you all work with?
Our partner agencies consist of 46 partner agencies.
Forty-six.
Forty-six. And there are several thousands more in the region that we cover. We do not make the decision as staff who our partner agencies are. That is done by volunteers just like you. Councilman Davis was president of our board, he can attest to this. I don't make a decision who any of the partners are, nor do I make a decision where the money goes, or any of my staff. It's all done by volunteers who are well-trained and versed at how to do this.
And out of the 46, how many deal with, you know, mental challenge issues?
Almost every one of them. So Alter Point is a partner agency. Catholic Social Services has a mental health component. You have Lifelines Family Counseling that strictly deals with mental health issues and other issues along those lines. Almost every partner agency is dealing with this in some form or fashion. And almost every issue, and I did read this whole thing and marked it up, so almost every one of our partner agencies fits into this plan and knows how to disperse this money and utilize this money to appropriately affect people. And just to give you an idea, in the $272,325, that's just one pool that we had, that almost affected 10,000 people with COVID funding that we distributed immediately. And then another 9,000 with only $25,000 for hurricane relief. So we're very effective at getting those funds out and affecting the most number of people.
All right, thank you.
If I could comment? And I would like to thank you for your service to this community, because I'm sure it runs very deep. When you look at the buckets, other than the premier pay, which is allocated for $11.2 million, then you have, in the next bucket, is the address negative economic impacts, a total of $17.3 million. And then for equity-focused services, you have $29.1 million. And this is, this is really what's going up to Washington now. It's not following, connecting the dots line by line. That is something they're not interested in. They wanted to know how much money you were putting in each of the buckets. And I really feel that your agency and all of the groups that you work with will be a big integral part, just like the South Alabama Roundtable, and groups that will come forward to look at these funds and how they can work to the best of the community. You're gonna dovetail into both of the major ones that are allocated as bucket services, by all means.
Yes, in the buckets, all except for Bucket One, really, we fit into every bucket. We really do.
Right, exactly. And that's my point. I'm gonna advocate back for the library service and take a little bit out of each one to get enough up there for the library people. That's just where I'm coming from, and I don't know if I have support. But to me, you're looking at a substantial amount of money in the other two components that dovetail into all of your missions and all of the things that you want to accomplish.
Exactly. And we're just asking, we have tons of experience and knowledge, please utilize us. We're a great community resource.
It would be a big... It would be a big overlook if we didn't draw that you, you know, do in the community and all the groups, and I'm sure that you're very well identified.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I would just like to say that we already know, we already know what you do. You all are excellent in what you do. It can be categorized as social services. If you look at bucket two, it's a million dollars in there for social service. That's you. So...
I'm sorry, Councilman Richardson, they're big and beautiful, but they're worthless. I can barely hear you. I apologize.
Okay, that is a million dollars in bucket two for social services.
That's not enough.
The only thing I'm saying, we're not spending anything today. Once we get the money, I would urge you to go ahead on and submit your proposal on what you plan to do, and what is it going to cost. You're not out, you're in.
Yes, sir.
What you got to do is submit. We're trying to get the money today. Once we get the money, you're going to have a chance to submit to us what it is that you can do.
Yes, sir. I understand that, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I'm just saying, don't forget us when it comes time for planning. I'm not even asking for money, I'm just saying, consider us when it comes time for planning. That's what I'm asking.
If you come before me, I'm voting for you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
I appreciate you being here today. As you pointed out, not only did I serve as chairman of the Board of the United Way, I also chaired the community campaign, 2010, I think, that raised $4.6 million for your various agencies. So I think the United Way can be a very valuable partner as we move forward in determining how the money is to be spent, which partner agencies to engage, and that sort of thing. So thank you again for being here.
Thank you all.
Phyllis Jeffrey, and following Phyllis Jeffrey is Matt Ambuster.
Good afternoon to the mayor, his staff, and the council. I am Phyllis Jeffrey and reside at 1707 New Hamilton Street, Mobile 36604. My presence today is to speak to you as a former library administrator of 31 years, retired since 2011, and as a citizen who relies upon the services and resources of the Mobile Public Library. When considering the distribution of the ARP premium pay funds, I hope you will keep in mind the unique position of the Mobile Public Library as it is in our community, and especially as it has served our citizens during the pandemic. The library adapted to the needs of the public by continuing to offer traditional and new services developing safe and creative practices. Most notable has been the curbside delivery of library materials, book bundles for children, and craft packages to help keep kids engaged. Summer library reading logs and incentives to read continue to be distributed both last summer and this summer. Curbside service offers faxing, voter registration, and notary services. The library has beefed up its online offerings. Children and families enjoy new virtual storytimes, craft and cooking demonstrations, and a splendid streamed event that highlights new books. For residents who do not already have a library card, temporary cards are made available so that everyone can take advantage of all service offerings, including eBooks, free video streaming, online studies, and test practices. Homework help remains a part of the library's core service. As soon as it was reasonably safe for the library to reopen, computers became available for patron use. It is not unusual for all computers to be in use. They are an essential need in our daily lives, as you know. As a reader and former librarian, I want to add that in Mobile County, 58% of children in the fourth grade read below grade level, according to test scores. The library is a resource for books and fun reading materials. One of the library's greatest pleasures is turning kids on to reading. Librarians and staff continue to do this for our community during the pandemic, and of course, it remains a mainstay in library services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Matt Armbruster, One Holster Court, East, Mobile, Alabama. I run ransom ministries, and I know you're not spending no money today, so I'm just going to not ask for no money. I'm just going to tell you that I feel like job training is the way to go. If we can get people trained from the time they're younger, we won't need a lot of the services that are out there, and we can use that money for that. Plus, then they generate their own money. We operate ransom recycling. We take formerly incarcerated, formerly homeless, formerly addicted people that know what other businesses want, and we put them to work in a real-life situation. We also do trauma-informed care, which is your mental health aspect. We also teach them how to budget, how to handle their money, how to keep jobs, how to be people of character. I believe that the money coming through this thing needs to be well-spent so that it is long-range and not just to fix a relief stage, because there's relief, rehabilitation, development. And I believe job training, first of all, rehabilitates people back where they can take care of themselves, and then also develops them to be more than they even thought they ever could be. So that's really, I'm going to probably use my whole three minutes, I just wanted you to be aware, if any of you ever want to come tour our facility and watch the guys, we've taken men that were 15-years-old, put in prison for 25-years. They come back out, we rapidly attach them to a job, and they are very successful now. They have a career. So we use the ABC model, any job, better job, a career, and I think that that is the way that we need to spend our money to change our community, to put money back into our community. So that's really all I got. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, where is your facility, sir? Can we...
Our recycling center is in, actually in Chickasaw, but we get people from all over Mobile County and Mobile that come in and through our program. But we do recycling of old electronics, so we teach them to take things apart, and then we sell it, and we pay them an hourly wage while they're going through it. So it's a paid training, but they generate their own pay by doing work. So that's kind of how we do it.
Well done, thank you.
Is that the last speaker?
Yes.
Can we take a break?
Oh, can we vote?
Yes.
Would that be good?
I think that's in order.
Five minutes almost turns into 20, Beth.
No, I need a break my own self. It'll take about five minutes.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Get a later break, Joel.
When they were doing this, they should have been thinking about time. God, darling.
Hey, start the watch. Hey. Hey, Reggie. Hold on, let me see. Who is it? Oh.
...
All right, John, take the break. Hey!
So moved.
Consent resolutions held over. 4465 declared the structure at 56 South Lafayette Street, a public nuisance in order demolished.
So moved.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
37550 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of allowance retail liquor Class 1 license for Canary Bar on North Jackson Street.
Moved to hold over till September 7.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
CIP resolutions held over 21612 and 21613, authorizing contracts with geotechnical engineering testing and Jose Weaver Construction for 2020 Pago and 2021 CIP resurfacing City Wyatt.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
If there are no objections, I can take all of these together?
No, let's take 31567 by itself.
Okay. 31567 adopt the U.S. Treasury ARP Action Plan.
So moved.
Second.
I thought, okay, we'll discuss it.
It's been moved in second. We're not at discussion.
Yes, thank you.
No?
Okay, I wasn't sure we were going to actually vote on these buckets today. I'll call them buckets. I thought we were going to listen to this debate.
Mr. President, we've said for several weeks we were going to vote on today.
Today? I thought we said we were going to vote on the 17th, but that's fine. I'd like to entertain some thoughts on this, if I may, to get the discussion going. The library service personnel, regardless of them being designated as city employees, they are still, there is still a way to get them funds, but when we look at the $11,250, that would not include them. I would like to consider looking at the other two buckets and pulling out $250,000 from each one. We don't have to do that now because we're not looking at programs per se, but I'm afraid that if we do roll out this program, getting the library personnel in the mix will not be possible. And I really believe that this is something that is an essential service. I don't think it opens the door to the airport authority people feeling like we should be giving them funds, or HUD, or even MOSS, or any of the other groups that the city contracts with or works with. This is a direct, they are in our city buildings, the city maintains them, they're city facilities, but of course, anytime something needs to be fixed, carpeted, there's funds expended that comes out of the city, and we don't do that with any of the other MOSS facilities or the HUD facilities, per se. So I would like to ask my colleagues to look at reducing the $17,351,632.50 to $17,101,632.50. And also, the $29 million would go down to $29,51,632.50, so that we can assure that the library personnel that have always considered them- So that we can assure that the library personnel that have always considered themselves as city employees, our citizens consider them as city employees. And they get retirement, and I know there's nuances about it. It, it, to me, it is more principle and they're able to be designated as essential workers and they filled an essential need in this community. So I hope that you'll join me with that, if we are going to vote this minute to put the buckets out there.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis?
The, uh, iteration of the, uh, plan submitted by the administration that's currently, uh, before us is one that I think was dated, uh, July fifteenth. And, uh, there was a subsequent, uh, iteration dated July twenty-first, which is the one below you and which is the one I believe is currently posted to the city's website. So my motion would be to, uh, as an amendment, to amend the motion by substituting, uh, the, uh, July twenty-first iteration for the previous iteration.
Second.
I'd second.
Then probably moved in second in a discussion.
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
I was moving around those other monies, so is there interest in getting five hundred thousand up to the premier pay? Because that is one that their calculator was actually taken to based on city employees getting the funds, which I feel they deserve it. Even the executive staff are, are qualifying for it. And I'm not depriving any of that, but if we can take two hundred and fifty out of each of those other categories, you are able to then resource the, um, library personnel. And I, and I think they're, they are standalone in this community. They have been for over a hundred years.
Ms. Rich, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded.
But I'm just trying to get an understanding.
We're trying to, we're trying to get to a basis in this one. We got to get to seven twenty-one before we can talk. We have to address the amendment, yes.
That's right. Any further discussion on the amendment?
To substitute.
That's been offered by Mr. Davis and properly set. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Wait a minute.
So, so now we're, we're at least working on the right iteration of this plan.
Yes, those are the numbers. I, I thought, thought that was automatic.
Do you hear a motion?
Oh geez. It is now though, right?
No.
Okay. That's right, I didn't think we were voting today.
So move what?
No.
We vote, we approve the amendment.
No motion on this.
We approve the amendment.
So now, now we got before us the.
The item as amended.
The item as amended.
That's right.
Okay, the item as amended is what is dated seven twenty-one, twenty-one? Okay. And is this the point where I now lobby to re, to change some of those, those end numbers in those two buckets at the?
Make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion. I'm just, I'm making a motion.
To amend.
That we remove two hundred and fifty thousand out of the seventeen, three hundred and fifty-one and twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand out of the twenty-nine, one hundred and one, sixty-three, six hundred and thirty-two, fifty, and pull that up to the bucket number one, the premium pay for essential workers.
I was second just for discussion.
Then probably moved in second for discussion. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis?
It, it makes, we have been advised by our own attorney that these individuals, the library employees are not employees of the city of Mobile. The only way they can share, and correct me if I'm wrong, in premium pay is if the mayor declares them to be essential employees. So far, there has been no such declaration, so it makes no sense to move the money around.
That's correct.
Mr. Aldis, if you could, uh, I, I know that you just indicated he was correct, but if you could go over the, as succinctly as possible, the opinion you shared with us as it relates to this, uh, this question of essential and the declaration and things of that nature.
Sure, so the, um, the rules in regards to the A R P Act that were, uh, both within the act itself and issued by the, uh, Department of the Treasury guidance and the code of federal regulations, uh, stated that it listed out some specific categories, essential workers, those having contact with the public throughout the pandemic.
Yes.
Or handling items dealing with the pandemic. Uh, the, and then it allowed for the, and it gave the names, you know, police officers and things like that. And then it also further gave the chief executive officer of the city the authority to designate other sectors that they felt were critical and essential to their particular situation. And so that's going to have to be done in order to do anything with, in regards to the library or any other group that would be, you know, want to get in on that. And furthermore, it would need to be done through some sort of performance contract with that group because it's not a city, it's a separate corporation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice, Mr. Richardson?
The issue before us today is not whether or not the city has enough money to give the library employees, a hundred and fifty of them, I believe, five thousand dollars. That is not the issue. So we can move money like checkers, we can move from A to B, C and D. We can't give them a dime until the mayor declare them essential. So the issue is not whether or not the money is that. We got the money to give them the money. We don't have the, we don't have the authority from the mayor to consider them as essential employees of the city. So whatever else we're trying to do, we're just wasting time because until the mayor declare them essential, it's nothing that the council can do. He knew what the mayor did, he left. So you know he's not getting ready to declare, not today. Might declare tomorrow, the mayor's gone. So, uh, I'm saying we, this is not going to help us to get them into money. What we got to figure out is how we can get, because we're not spending any money today. We still have time to try to convince the mayor to declare them essential. Until, if we can't do that, we have failed to get the money to them.
I, I think the case was made that library services are, is really our only means of really educating citizens. And it, because we, we're not in the education business, but we are in the business of having libraries that help to educate our citizens and to embellish their quality of life. They worked during the pandemic, they're, were part-time and full-time employees. The six hundred thousand that was, um, represented last, at the last meeting was for the entire service, but we're not responsible for the entire service. It would only be for those that worked with the citizens of Mobile and, in our city facility libraries and the ones that we lease. But I, for the life of me, we're looking at the buckets. So where is the harm at this point in time, since we've, we've heard from an essential service that was left out, that could be put in, that if you don't put in the five hundred thousand, you're basically locking them out of it? And, and Mr. Richardson is correct, it would still have to come to council to actually be allocated. But if the funds are not there, there's absolutely no hope for getting them the resource that they equitably deserve, just like every staff member that worked with our community during the pandemic. And I, I just, I don't, I don't know how much to lobby or to, or to, or to get the sense that this is a big part of the community. And, um, they deserve to be, um, remembered and to be rewarded for the resources that they developed when people needed that outlet and continue to need that outlet.
Mr. President?
I mean, it's taking two hundred and fifty thousand out of each of the other two buckets to bring it up so the resource is there.
Mr. Richardson?
Um, what, what I would recommend, I would recommend that next week, that, uh, Councilmember Rich put a resolution before this council saying that we, members of this council, consider library workers to be essential.
But the money won't be there.
But, huh?
The money's not there. The money's not in this bucket if you're voting today.
We can put the money in the bucket best. We can move the money anywhere we want to move. The, the money is not going to come to us in a vault. What we got to break into, the money is coming before this council, we can do anything we want with the money. So I'm saying, I think we need to put forth an effort, uh, to get the mayor to declare them essential, put a resolution on, let us say they are essential, and let him be, as by himself saying they are not.
Amen.
So do us.
The time to do it is now when you're, when you're allocating the buckets so that it is a strong message to any administration that the library staff should have been included from the get-go. They weren't, as long as the mayor would be sure to include them as essential workers, he would still have the choice not to do that. But it, we're not giving him, there, there is no choice of that happening if that bucket goes without it now. And all you're doing is allowing that choice to happen. And I would hope after the council felt like that was a resource that needed to go out the door in that manner, it would happen.
Mr. President?
Ms. Rich?
I would like to ask our attorney whether or not, uh, there will be an opportunity when the money comes here, if, if the employees were declared essential at some point for us to give them the five thousand dollars if the mayor declared them essential.
I think this, this is like a mini budget. And so this would have to be amended.
Right. So we'd have to do.
I mean, you could put the whole fifty-eight million in that bucket, but until he does make it, it ain't going to happen. But, uh, it could be amended, this, uh, whatever resolution is passed today would have to be amended later. And that may entail some sort of reporting requirements to the.
What we got to do is make amends.
So, uh, Councilmember Rich made a motion.
I made a motion about switching two hundred and fifty out of each of.
We've had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All in opposition?
All.
Opposed. The motion fails. So now we go back to, uh, the item as amended.
Right.
Uh, any further discussion? I, I just, I want to say that, uh.
Sad.
These are tough decisions to be made. To have this outlay of federal resources is a unique opportunity. And one thing that I am committed to seeing is that the communities that is intended to serve, uh, get the resources that were intended for them to receive. Uh, we've made some progress in that regard, and I believe we're going to achieve much more as these various buckets, as they're called, are translated into actual contracts. Contracts with our nonprofit agencies and our social service agencies so that we can make, uh, inroads and make progress and recover from this horrendous coronavirus. It's called a rescue plan. So we ought to be rescuing those who are in need of it. And that's what I'm, I'm sure is our intent. These are very generalized buckets of resources at this point. Very generalized, with the exception of the Woodcock redevelopment or the affordable housing that's targeted to east of I sixty-five, or the affordable housing that's targeted to Michigan Avenue. It's already letting our citizens know that we're coming into communities that historically have need, have need a rescue. And so, uh, it's not a perfect plan by any stretch, but I don't know of one. But it's one that I'm going to lend my support to so that we can get this process started. And I'm going to commit myself, and I know this council will be integral in making certain that we touch as many in our communities that need touching as possible. Any further discussion?
And Mr. Manager?
Uh, Ms.
Just for a public knowledge, you know, what these buckets consist of, and again, it's general, bucket one is full-time and part-time employees in FICA. Bucket two is gun violence technology, community violence intervention program, some camp, um, also after-school learning, community-based violence prevention program, small business assistance, rental assistance, down payment assistance, uh, approximately for three hundred and forty families. Utility assistance, social service assistance and tourism. Bucket five is the Woodcock redevelopment home ownership, affordable housing target east of I sixty-five in the C D V G eligible areas. Uh, affordable rental assistance, um, housing, uh, revolving, uh, funds around the Michigan Avenue area, which that would consist of R V and Birdsville communities. Uh, the affordable housing, which is City Wyatt, C D V G eligible areas, and also housing rehab, uh, for approximately one hundred owners occupied rehab. And then we also have the grant administration. Again, the bucket, this money is being spent on I east sixty-five where many citizens for many years have stated that they have been left out or forgot about. And this right here will bring more life into the area. Again, the majority of the calls that I received in the past eight and a half years, you know, is blight and, you know, and, and violence. And the blight and violence is addressed on here, so therefore I will be supporting this plan because this plan is helping District Three, where majority, over majority of my citizens been, you know, hollering about, talking about, screaming about for the past eight and a half years. And again, I will be putting my support behind this plan. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Any further discussion?
Thank you. I thought we left, and, and I'm not arguing spending money east of sixty-five where a lot of the poverty and the, and the need is very critical. But I thought we, we left citizens understanding that these line items are not necessarily what's going out the door, being reported to Washington. The, the first report due by the end of August was how much money you were putting in each of the available buckets. Not necessarily that down payment assistance would be a million. So these are what started out as programs that are mostly HUD-initiated programs, which some are successful, some not so successful. But it was a way to say, we've got to get this out to Washington quickly because we want this money, we don't, we want to be able to spend it. But in dialoguing with the community was an understanding that there are nuances to the spending that comes before council in the future. And so I'm not saying that gun violence, it will be ignored, but is it three point five million? Is there some mental health that needs to go into that area of gun violence? You know, it's just to, to lock it down at this point, you're doing a disservice. And I really thought we had clarified, and, and it's not to take away from your, any council member's vision or the administration's vision of what the outcome of this fifty-eight million will do for the community. But it's, the community is going to be a big part of it, and that's what my office heard. And I, and I want to assure them that this is not the list moving up to Washington. Do, do I get that correct? It's the areas that these fit into.
You know, to, um, Chris Arledge's point, this is our budget that we submitted to you so that it gave y'all an idea and the community an idea of how we plan to encumber this money, which has to be encumbered by twenty-twenty-four, and how we plan to spend this money by twenty-twenty-six. So talking with Jamie Roberts, um, and with the Police Department on what programs currently exist that we can go ahead and begin the funding to get all this money. So this is our proposal on how we would like to spend the A R P money.
So that's what everyone's voting on today, correct? Do I have that correct? I thought there was more. Okay. Then I stand corrected.
But, but this, this can be changed when it comes forth.
I get, yeah, well, I, I won't be. I get, yeah. Well, I won't be on council because I'm retiring.
Well, and again, to Mr. Arledge's point, this is a proposed budget. It can be amended. And y'all have already covered that a lot of the ass that you're hearing will be part of the RFP process. I mean, this is setting aside money so that these nonprofits have buckets that they can actually reach into for some of the essential services we hear about, such as mental health. And just so you know, Ms. Rich, it doesn't prohibit the library either from, with an RFP, to ask for money.
Here's a question I have. When you send this paperwork up to Washington, because I've not seen what the city will, your administration will be filling out, if you line it for gun violence, does that lock it in? Or how does a group make access to it for their resources to be?
You know, this is an allocation into the, within the guidelines of the RFP for approval by Treasury. None of these items are going to be exactly what we say that they spend. And so you have the flexibility. If we're unable to spend 14 million in the Michigan Avenue corridor, that money can be reallocated into affordable housing, maybe north of Springfield, wherever the CDVG eligible areas are.
Yes.
And so we do understand that this is just a proposed budget. It can be amended. And none of this is down to the penny. But as we built that budget, we had to figure out what programs are out there that fit within the guidelines that we could encumber and spend the money in within the next four and a half years.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed.
Item passes a vote of five to one?
Right.
Yeah.
08614, approved purchase order to Jason Pilger Chrysler Dodge for Jeep SUV for Police Administrative Services. 08615, approved purchase order to Sunbelt Fire for fire coats and pans for fire department. 09616, appropriate monies from the Louisville Alabama Special Revenue Fund. 09617, reallocate monies from Citywide Signal Innovation Assessment.
I would like to take that and buy it, sir.
You want to just hold it for maybe 30 days or four weeks?
Oh, this is a bridge payment?
Let's just hold it over.
Hold it over for, I think...
That might not be enough in dealing with the...
I mean, four weeks gets us sort of, if we have to extend it, we can.
Take it up separately, Lisa.
I had to hold it up more.
Let's take it up, the bridge separately.
Okay. We'll take that one separate.
Take it up separately.
21618, authorized contract with Youngblood Barrett Construction and Engineering for Fire Training Center Administration Classroom Building. 21619, authorized contract with Thompson Engineering for Citywide Bridge Inspection. 21620, authorized contract with Doyle Associates for Mobile Sanger Theater Mechanical Upgrades. 23621, accept permanent drainage and temporary construction easements for McRae Avenue Drainage Phase 2 Project. 6622 proclaimed July 8th as a day of remembrance for the captives and survivors of the slave ship Clotilda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. I need to, if you all would indulge me, I have a statement from one of the descendants of the Clotilda Association who has been instrumental in getting this item onto the agenda. And he asked that I have these remarks read on his behalf into the record, please. Dear City Council President Manzi and fellow City Council members, good morning. My name is Jeremy Ellis, and I am a sixth-generation descendant of Polly Allen and Rose Allen, who are enslaved Africans on the Clotilda. Since I can remember, my family has been on the front lines working to preserve the history and legacy of Afracatown and our ancestors. My grandmother, Beatrice Ellis, known as Mom B., was the last president of the Afracatown, direct descendants of the Clotilda Incorporated, which was founded in 1984. I would like to recognize members of that organization, which was the original organization. And I would also like to recognize the Clotilda Descendants Association for the work that they are doing in our community. Unfortunately, I am unable to witness today's vote in person. I will be viewing the vote via live stream. I'll ask Councilwoman Manzi to read my remarks into the record. July 8th, 2021 marked the 161st anniversary of the arrival of the 110 Africans aboard Clotilda, known by descendants as the landing. The landing is a phrase coined by fellow descendant William "Bill" Green, Dr. Joe Billingsley, and myself during the 160th anniversary of the 110's arrival. The arrival of the 110 marked the last documented date that enslaved Africans were brought to the United States via the transatlantic slave trade. As a result, July 8th, 1860 is historical and significant to American history and Alabama history. It's a date we should never forget. And as a result, I believe the state of Alabama and the city of Mobile should lead the way in recognizing July 8th as a state holiday. This day should go down in history, one, for the members of the 110, two, for reconciliation of the 110 and their descendants, and three, in organized city-community-wide day of service in Afracatown, helping to revitalize the community. Over the past several weeks, I've had the unique privilege of talking with Councilwoman Manzi and sharing with him my thoughts on the 110 and their strength, heroism, and perseverance. I've been impressed with his support and how he's partnered with me in championing this resolution in order for today's vote to happen. In closing, I would like to thank Councilwoman Manzi for her hard work. Secondly, I would like to thank each of you for your public service. And finally, I would personally like to ask each of you to vote to pass this resolution, making July 8th the landing honoring the lives of the 110 Africans aboard Clotilda a day of service. And it's signed by Jeremy Ellis. I want to thank Mr. Ellis. I hope that he is still viewing this live stream because it's been an extended meeting to date. But he has really been an advocate and a champion, along with the Clotilda Descendants Association, for all things Afracatown and all things Platteau and all things relative to the landing. And I'm hopeful and positive that this resolution will pass. And I look forward to working with him over the next years to come to make this not just a mere resolution on paper, but a day of action, both in words and deeds, throughout our city. And I'll provide a copy of that statement to the office to make certain that it's preserved for perpetuity. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
09617, reallocate monies from Citywide Signal Innovation and Assessment to CSX Bridge Painting Broad Street.
Move delay over 30 days. Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced, 03627 through 21647.
Motion to suspend rules for immediate consideration for 03-627 through 21-647.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any objections to taking all these together?
No, ma'am.
03627 and 628 are appointing Robbie Fitzgerald to the Ad Hoc Animal Shelter Citizens Advisory Committee and reappointing Deborah White to the Solid Waste Disposal Authority. 31629, authorized grant application to the South Alabama Regional Planning Commission for Title III Funding. 31630, authorized fiscal year 21 Collaborative Crisis Response Training Program Grant with U.S. Department of Justice. 31631, authorized application to Alabama Historical Commissions Fiscal Year 22 Historic Sites Grant. 37632, recommend approval to the A.C. Board for issuance of a restaurant, retail, liquor license for Rock the House Cafe. 46633, near the corner of Lafayette and Dolphin Streets, the honorary designation of Becky Dickinson Way. 634 and 635 and 636 are approving a water special bonus to Employee of the Month for Parks and Recreation Department, Public Works at Large Employee and Public Services Employee. 6637, determine an appropriation to opportunity for entertainers and performing arts serves of public purpose and approved payment. 21647, authorized contract with John Donald for services as absentee election specialist.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced, 01638.
About Councilor Rivers, delay it for one week.
Resolutions being introduced, I'm sorry, we did, we added one on this, which was 21648, and that was authorizing contract with SC Stagner Contracting for Canal Street Wall Repairs and Fencing at Washington Avenue and Palmetto Street, $166,350. Okay, so resolutions being introduced with the first time, 08639 through 21648.
About Councilor Rivers, we'll lay it for one week.
Call for public hearings, 41646, call for public hearing to consider vacation of Osprey Lane and Egreg Crossing scheduled September 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
Mr. Williams.
No one else was. Thank you very much.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. I was asked by the Parks Department and I imagine Public Works as well about an issue with the splash pads. One of the reasons they have to shut them down is because there are wrappers and juice boxes and straws and all kinds of things that get taken into the splash pad area, which is a big no-no, but it gets dropped and then sucked into the system and it breaks down the system. So there are garbage cans nearby, and I hope that parents will watch their kids and please not add to this problem by any means. I didn't realize that that was one of the reasons why things were having to shut down. But it's something where everyone has to be a little more responsible. There are directions or, what should I say, information out front that tells you not to bring food in and certainly not to bring it where they are in the splash pad area. So please don't do that so that everyone can enjoy the splash pads. And I imagine that's an issue through all of them, not just the one at Medal of Honor Park. So please be cautious of that. I wanted to remind everyone that we've got just a couple more weeks till election, and I wish everyone the very best, and I hope that our community is wiring up. Normally, we have about 35% of the electorate that actually comes out to vote for city council and for the mayor's race. So I hope maybe that will be a little bit better. And I know that people might be concerned about COVID, but wear your mask and go in and vote. And I'm sure there'll be all kinds of, you know, ways to do it so that you're safe and sound. So again, that will be coming up in just a couple of weeks. Isn't it two weeks from today? See, I've lost track because I don't have to worry about it. No, just kidding. Again, I want to also say that I enjoyed the debate and the dialogue about the rescue plan, that the city will be working with our citizens. And I do hope that it is a lot of embracing of the citizens. I had promised, well, not a promise, but I mentioned in my newsletter that I was going to ask the mayor. He's not here right now, so I think I'll get it in writing. But just so the chief of staff knows, I was very interested in the issue with the emails and shutting out a councilperson from their constituency. And I just wanted to learn from the mayor how it got back up, you know, because the city council's attorney wrote a very clear opinion about that the council cannot be mandated by the administration, just like on the other side of the coin, we cannot mandate or demand anything from any administrator. So I hope to get it directly from the mayor. I would like that peace of mind, that the information that came over from our end of city government about the separation, was that part of the reason why the mail got turned back on, not just that the test, he took the test. Because to me, he was always willing to take the test. It was just a matter of the demand. Well, if you feel you can answer for the mayor, because I did tell my readers my concerns that I had about that.
You know, at the very heart of this was really our cyber insurance carrier, which was requiring that we certify that all users on our system have this cyber awareness training. And it was, that was the reason that eventually it blocked out, I think, 18 city employees that had not completed that awareness training. But once the awareness training was completed, then the Information Technology Center went ahead and started putting those back on. And we could certify that all of our employees had received that type of training for our insurance premium purposes.
And I can understand that for city employees because that would not be any of our business, you know, what was mandated or directed from the administration.
And again, there was never a mandate. We certainly weren't trying to dictate to city council. We do understand that you may or may not, you know, participate in something like that. But it really just came down to having to certify that all users on the system have been...
Was there any communication with council members, other than what we got from the IT department?
Ms. Rich, this is your announcements.
Yes. Well, but I had said that I would bring this up because to me, I really, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I'm very concerned about the sense that there's not a separation and a check and balance of power. And I think it's very important.
I'm very concerned as well. But this is your announcements period.
Right. But this is my announcement because I was hoping the mayor would be here in orders to give me some peace of mind that a direct, that a legal opinion that was rendered...
Unfortunately, the mayor's not here.
I know. Okay.
That would be the appropriate course of action.
No, it needs to be publicly because it's to the point. Okay.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would say can't no insurance company direct this council what to do. Nobody. What's the name of the insurance company? My announcement is that District 1, Beat 35, Tobinville Community Meeting will be held Thursday, August 19th, at the Tobinville Library, starting at 6:00 p.m. Masks will be required. That will be an update on CIP. I have, hopefully, I have someone from Dr. Isho's office, Lower County Health Department, to talk about the pandemic. We're going to talk about job training. But more than all of that, it's a time that I hear from the citizens. I gather input from them on what it is that they wish me to focus on. So I'm looking forward to hearing from the citizens, asking all of our citizens in the Tobinville area to please come out. That is Thursday, August 19th, at the Tobinville Library, starting at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Davis? Okay. Do I hear a motion? It probably moved to second that we would adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.